Good evening and welcome council staff and members of the public to our council meeting of Wednesday, November the 11th. And although it was in November, the 11th like none other than I've experienced before, it's truly was still poignant and memorable to me and I hope to you as well. I just wanted to thank a few people who helped make this Remembrance Day one that we would remember, but also one that would help keep our most vulnerable residents safe. So starting with the Rotary who held a virtual meeting this morning at 7:15. And I really enjoyed listening to some of the stories, particularly the major from CFP Borden, who talked about his deployment recently into nursing and long-term care homes. That reminded us that it's it's very much about the veterans, but it's also about the people who serve us today as well, keeping us safe in ways that perhaps we hadn't imagined even a year ago. Also, our wonderful Legion 547 put on both small Senate half service at the Cookstown Senate half and also one today at the Belle Yerthe Senate half and Legion, and it was really well done as well. I want to thank councillor Arstadi for representing Innesville at the Berry Legion today and also councillor Payne for representing us at the Sandy Cove Senate half as well. And and most of all, staff, I really want to thank staff for putting on the virtual Remembrance Day service. It probably was more work than putting on a regular Remembrance Day service, but really well done with the Pipers and the Bugler and and showing off some of the honoring some of our our veterans. And a special thanks to all of the staff who are involved with that. I think Wendy Riccardi and of course Kevin Jacobs and everyone who contributed to that. It is still live. You can still see it on YouTube. So if you would didn't have the opportunity today, because really Remembrance Day shouldn't be about one day. It should be every day. So please take a moment and watch that video if you haven't already done so. And finally, I just wanted to, on a personal note, tell you, I did reach out to some someone who who means so much to me at Remembrance Day. It's Mr. Al Dawson and his wife, Marg. Those of you probably have seen him for as long as I can remember at different Remembrance Day services. He always reads the roll call. He lost two brothers in World War II, Douglas and and Gordon Dawson. And so I reached out to his son and asked him to to tell his father and mother that we missed him today. And he told me that he was by the Innisville Senate half today. He said, he did check to see that the Dawson wreath was at the Senate half. And he asked me to express thanks to Kevin Jacobs and the Remembrance Day team for all the work they've done. And also, he wanted to express his gratitude for all of the repair work and the restoration that's being done so carefully at the Cookstown Senate half. Lest we forget. So thank you for that. And with that, I will tell you that this meeting is now open and it's being livestreamed and that we are audio and video recording and it shall form part of the record and will be retained in accordance to the town's retention bylaw. And for more information, should you require it about that, you can contact our clerk's office. And thank you to everybody who I see has is muted and has their video off. And we'll call on you at the appropriate time to turn your video on. And of course, any staff who have a comment that they would like to make or answer a question, please feel free to put your video on so that I can recognize you. So we have no open forum participants that have registered for this evening. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And in a rare evening, we have no agenda repair or amendments. So the agenda is as was printed and on on our website for the past week. So I'd ask for a mover and a second to approve the agenda. That would be approved by councillor Waters and seconded by councillor Nichol. All those in favor? That is carried. Next disclosures of interest. Is there any items that any member of council wishes to disclose at this time? Or if at any time through the meeting, one becomes apparent to you, please just let us know and we can take care of it at that time. Councillor, or sorry Deputy Mayor Davidson.
Thank you, worship. I'll be leaving at 8:00 PM. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have an early departure declared at eight. And anyone else have an early departure to declare? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is presentations and petitions. So we have one presentation tonight and it is from the CEO and president of Stevenson Memorial Hospital, Mr. Jody Levesque. Jody, whenever you're ready, please turn on your video and and your audio and we welcome you very much to council this evening and look forward to your presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Dolan and Deputy Mayor Davidson and councillors. I, for those of you who don't know me, I am Dr. Jody Levesque. I am the proud and privileged president and CEO here at Stevenson Memorial Hospital. And I wanted to come to council. It's been about four years since I've been over to council to update you on what we're doing here at Stevenson. And I thought this evening, you might find it interesting about what your local community hospital is trying to do to move forward and to get better. So I thank the clerk. We're just going to take you through a quick slide deck. I have two objectives this evening. One, I want to bring you up to speed on some of the major projects we're doing today because of the growth that we're facing in our community. And then I want to take you into what has become, I feel like my dissertation, the journey to getting a hospital redeveloped. And I hope to be able to update you on that. So first off, first, just to let you know, we are seeing growth here that is third fastest in the province and we have a hospital that is built in 1964. And if the emergency department was built for to serve, it was 4,000 square feet and built to serve 7,000 folks. And we last year saw close to 40,000 people here through our emergency department. We are continuing to see higher trauma. And I'm proud to say that I've been working hard with the ministry to bring ICU beds here to Stevenson. So we are in the midst of trying to juggle in this old 1964 hospital, state-of-the-art ICU care, level two ICU care. And, you know, pains me all the time that I have to see family members who have to travel either up to our wonderful facilities up in Barry or down to Newmarket because we are unable to take care of higher acuity patients close to home. So I'm proud to say that come January, we've had a few hitches with the construction just because the building is so dated. But we're pretty excited to be opening our new level, level two ICU in January. That's the goal I date, hopefully, fingers crossed. And immediately when I, when I got the announcement that we could go ahead and do this, we hired respiratory therapy. It's a first ever here at Stevenson. And I know the bigger shops, bigger hospitals have them, but we've never had them here. And I don't have, I don't think I have to tell councillors how important respiratory therapy, especially as we go through this pandemic, the role they played with innovation and management of respiratory illness. So they're here 24/7 in the building. They came before COVID, just before COVID hit. I was proud to be able to secure a roster of 24/7 respiratory. And you'll see our, hopefully you'll be able to come by and see our new ICU post-January. You know, in the old days, you'd be able to actually come physical site. Maybe I'll have to do a virtual tour. Next slide, please. The other thing we're doing that I'm really excited about is we've updated our trauma room. As I mentioned, we're seeing more motor vehicle accidents and higher degrees of trauma than we've ever seen before. So for those who've been here and seen this facility, you can look up in the right-hand picture and you see our lovely 1964 vintage green medical tile. I can tell you that's no longer there anymore. We've updated the whole trauma room with the state-of-the-art lights. We've got beautiful opaque doors to drive privacy. We've got proper ventilation, finally, good negative pressure in and out of those rooms. And we've updated the facility today because we have to. We can't wait for redevelopment. And next slide, please. The other thing we've done in the middle of the pandemic, and I remember on March the 11th, getting the call from Minister Elliot's office to say, would Stevenson be able to participate in running a COVID-19 assessment center for the community? We knew that Royal Vic and Southlake were going to take a big role in that. But we also wanted to play our part as a community hospital. So we did. We opened up a COVID-19 assessment center. I give full credit to the nursing staff and physicians. We don't have the physical facilities. Those two other hospitals did. So we, we ran a drive-through parking lot COVID-19 where we had folks out in unbelievable PPE during the summer months swabbing and and taking care of our community surveilling. And I, this slide's a little dated. I can tell you, we've done over 9,500 folks have been through our assessment center. Many folks from Innisville Drive. We've gone to an appointment style just a couple of weeks ago. So in conjunction with the minister's direction. And we are looking to open a winterized facility down in the lower parking lot of Fletcher. It'll be a drive-through facility as well. We like to keep folks in their cars. And there's a number of clinical reasons we could go with that. We looked at trying to move off-site with primary care and a number of other folks. But for reasons beyond this deputation, we kept it close to home. I wanted my staff close to the building. And we will continue to provide that through the winter months. And I think it's a really important service in order to surveil the spread of the illness. And as you know, the numbers are going the wrong way. So we need to be vigilant. Next slide, please. I've been, I've been here now. I think this is my sixth year here at Stevenson. And one of the reasons I came here was to help push the redevelopment project. It is a marathon, not a sprint in order to get a revitalized hospital for your community, as you all are well aware. We are very pleased over the summer that we got a stage one approval. There are six steps, five stages, but six steps to get through the capital branch. The stage one and stage two are the most critical in the sense that you're really planning your functional program and how you're going to build your hospital. And we got our stage one approval in the summer. I was just thrilled. It was the first recognition from our government that we're on the right track to revitalizing this hospital. And, you know, I'm in the process, when I submitted our stage one and got approved, I put a draft stage two as an appendix. I really wanted to push the envelope. So we've worked on our, on our stage two submission. And some of the struggle over the summer was the capital branch of the ministry was pushing back, saying, you gotta submit your stage two to be aligned with a term they call H-BAM. And I know there's lots of acronyms in healthcare. H-BAM is for health-based allocation model. Simply put, it's the algorithm that they drive to make sure you got the right number of beds for to serve your community. Next slide. So I can tell you that there were, this is, this is certainly a battle back and forth with the Ministry of Health and Capital Branch. You know, in August, they came to me and said, sure, Jody, go ahead and submit your stage two. We figure you should have about 35 beds at Stevenson. Well, that's three less beds than we're operating. And you can think, how can you build less beds in a growing community where bed utilization, ALC rates, hospitals are under tremendous duress and pressure. We're, we're trying to end hallway medicine. At Stevenson, we have no choice but hallway medicine because we have no space in the old building. So I kind of took it on my, upon myself and I don't whether it's my naive optimism slash, some people may say it's just perseverance or tenacity. But we've had a number of meetings with Capital Branch through the COVID summer. And I was pleased to say, just last week, they finally came back and said to me, Mr. CEO, you're welcome to submit your stage two. We agree with you. We had done a really deep dive on how many beds we feel we need to serve this community. It's up 47 beds. And I wanted to be able to build the hospital for future growth and future expansion with soft space because I've never heard hospital, the need for healthcare going the other way. So in my 35 years in healthcare, and I want to try to anticipate where we're going to need to be 10 years, 15 years and 20 years from now. So very pleased, October 21st, just a week ago, they finally said, please submit your stage two. We agree with your methodology with 47 beds. Next slide. So where am I at today? Well, I'm at the point where I'm going to be taking the stage two to my board, hopefully for approval. And we will be submitting with, along with the planning parameters to get our stage two in. It's kind of like working with the teacher on the essay before you actually submit it. So I'm, I'm hoping that the approval process for stage two and ending the planning phases of building a hospital will come to, come to some success. And I'm more confident than I was even two, three years ago that we seem to, we've been held in the budget. Stevenson's been named in the budget two years in a row and held again for this major capital expansion. And now the task is upon us over the next 18 to 24 months to raise the local share. And you guys are probably all aware that the government pays 90%, 10% is the split. Never falls 90/10. It's more like 75, 25, maybe even 70/30, depending how much new expansion you have. So our local share for our hospital and what I'm going to need to be turning to our local community is $30 million. And we did do a feasibility study. We believe we can raise that 30 million. We've already raised over half of it through some of our efforts to date. And, you know, thank the Ottawa Saga Foundation and Honda, who's in our backyard, and other folks, County of Simcoe, who've all started to secure working towards the local share. But, you know, each of the 122 hospitals in the province of Ontario, many of us are having to approach municipalities to be able to see what they can do to help support the local share. And I'm really hoping that by showing you guys how folks from Innisville use our hospital, you will take into consideration being part of the solution on raising the local share. So next slide, please. Just to give you a sense, you know, I hope it comes through on your screen. You can see sort of the orange. That's our primary catchment area. And then we fall in, the yellow is really the secondary catchment area. And that stretches over into Innisville and down along the Southlake corridor, up into Barry. We get folks from Barry. We get folks from York region. We do have the sexiest fastest emerge, we pay for performance wait times in the province of Ontario. Really proud about that. And whenever the big shop seems to get, get backed up at holiday times or et cetera, folks drive to come to our merge for services. And, and you can see that we stretch all the way over into Orangeville. So hospitals share catchment areas. And I'm proud to say that we, we serve all of SoSimcoe. So next slide, please. This is from our stage one. It's, you notice that it's, it's got less totals, 30,000. We did 40,000 business and I can tell you that we had about 4,800 folks from Innisville come. So it's, the trend is the same on the breakdown of who comes what. We're primarily service new Tecumseh, but Essa, Ag and Innisville are all municipalities who tend to use our hospital. And we had about, I think, when I calculate again, 4,400 folks from Innisville come through our emergency department last year. Next slide, please. So for those who haven't seen it, we haven't changed our plan. We, we worked closely with the government. We looked at a greenfield site. We were told that isn't going to happen for medium-sized hospitals. At least that was the advice I was given and with the team I was working with at Capital Branch. And we've been working on a revitalized and redeveloped Stevenson, very similar, which you see at Toronto Western or Aurelia. We plan to maximize the 11.8 acres on Fletcher. There will be tripling of the parking. And really, it's a two-story wraparound design in which I'm hoping to open up a second, for those who have come here, a second entrance on Fletcher for ambulance and building a proper four-bay ambulance so that when folks get offloaded from an ambulance, they're not offloaded in the cold or in the weather as they are today. So really modernizing and preserving our heliport, which is a really important part of the, of the design. We utilize the services of Orange probably 52 to 54 times a year, once a week. If you think about it that way, for trauma and to take people to more trauma, critical type services that are beyond just a level two ICU that really need level three ICU care. Next slide, please. I'm coming to the end councillor, so I'll wrap up. Just for those of you who love the devil in the detail, these are the slides. That, that would be our first floor. Next slide. That's our second floor wraparound design. All our inpatient rooms will be co-horted together. Our ICU, medical, surgical and obstetrics, all up onto the second floor. One of the challenges we've had with Capital Branch because of COVID is they're, they've changed. They used, they, you know, up until a year ago, they were saying, you know, you plan a hospital for 80% private rooms, 20% what they call ward rooms. Now with COVID and for good reason, beyond this deputation, everybody needs to have their own room to manage infectious disease. And so we are, this design really preserves all 100% single-room occupancy, own washroom, and moving all the inpatient units together for nursing efficiency, cleanliness and infection control. It's just a really sleek design that innovates nursing model care. Next slide. That's just the bottom of the building. Keep our cafeteria the same and your entrance in off Fletcher to the secondary parking. So last slide. Just, you know, folks from Innisville have been very kind. Businesses came over here. They donated to our, our staff, you know, I, I've been in healthcare 30-plus years and I really saw over this pandemic why nurses, respiratory, social work, allied health, EBS, DI staff, physicians, all work in healthcare. And it really is our willingness and want to serve you when you need us the most. Stevenson is a community hospital. We're not trying to be a regional health center. We really try to work closely with our community partners and our community partners really thank this. I can't thank folks enough for their kind words from PPE donations to, you know, trying to bring us food for our staff. And our staff are deeply appreciative of the folks of Innisville and everything they've done to make this community hospital just soar over the last four or five years. So I want to make sure I thank council and thank the, thank the residents for their ongoing support of this hospital. That's the last slide. I think that's a little more, I think, than the deck. No, so we're into our big campaign. That's kind of what that gives you a sense of the, the high-level vision of the building. On the far left is really the old 70,000 square foot building. And then we're looking at tripling the size of the building altogether with the new, new wraparound design. Proper atrium when you come in, a secondary, not having people come through two doors, segregated emergency entrance to manage infectious disease, all the state-of-the-art stuff. So the stage two, I'm hoping it'll go in next week. And goodness gracious, wouldn't it be nice in this conservative government, knowing that this has been a conservative writing for so long, that perhaps, perhaps Minister Elliott may come here and make an announcement. There's probably three or four community hospitals in the province that are kind of leading the way. And Stevenson is right there in that pack to have a redeveloped hospital. So I thank you. I will stop talking. I've been over, I'm getting to the 10-minute mark. And thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to come and I'm willing to answer any questions if the councillors have any. If not, I will let you be because I know you've got a very important agenda. I hope you're all safe and I hope you're all following public health guidelines as we enter some very challenging times in Ontario.
Thank you so much, Dr. Levesque. Questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Arstadi.
Just to say thank you for the presentation. Exciting to see the schematics on the new addition. And also, I think when we had a presentation in a previous year and Stevenson Memorial Hospital had said there how quickly they were able to handle patients in your emerge. It probably draws more of a crowd from Innisville after hearing that. So, but it's, it's difficult to do and very well organized. So thank you very much.
You're quite welcome councillor. I, I went over and I did a presentation in Innisville to Rotary Club. And there's probably 150 seniors that came to listen. And I asked the audience, how many of you have you Stevenson? And there wasn't one person who didn't put their hand up. So I, I think we do serve our purpose. We're, we're not trying to compete with Southlake or RBH, but we do provide a critical service. Community hospitals and smaller hospitals play an integral part in managing the volume and surge. And when I ask Innisville folks, what is the most important service we provide? They go to cardiology. They'll go to Royal Vic, cancer care. They'll go to Southlake. They come to us for emergency care because they, they know they can be in and out. If it's less acute, they know they can be in and out in a quick way.
Thank you. I can attest to that personally after an unfortunate incident with a golf ball. Um, can I ask a question about ALC beds, alternative level of care beds? And what percentage of your beds are occupied by folks who really don't need to be in a hospital bed, but there's no other place for them to be right now?
Yeah. So as of today, sitting today, we have over 22% of our beds, inpatient beds with ALC. And that's a growing problem in Simcoe County. The Simcoe County hospitals have the highest, next to North York General, just in the last quarter of ALC rates of anywhere in the province of Ontario. It's a real challenge for us, you know, in terms of moving folks. And COVID certainly hasn't helped, you know, with LTCs on outbreak. And we're, we're in those homes. We're, we're helping folks just, you know, long-term care. We're in the schools. We are, we are in retirement homes and congregate settings. But our ALC, because of those, those outbreaks, it's really slowed the flow of being, getting people back to where they need to be. And so they, they stay in a hospital and it's, it's hard because we've got really strict visitation policies for good reason. It pains me to watch family members and seniors not being able to connect. We're trying to do, we can everything virtually, but you know, virtual is one, as you guys know, virtual, what we're doing here is one thing, but seeing people in person or being able to hug your loved one is a whole other matter. So ALC is a big problem, Mayor Dolan, and it's a good question. And we continue to work with the other CEOs in Simcoe County to try to find a novel solutions to our long-term care issues.
Thanks very much. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Nichol.
Hey, worship. For me personally, I've never been to that hospital, unfortunately or fortunately, I guess, one way or another, however you look at it. I've heard nothing but great things about the, the wait times there as well. And I'm wondering if there might be a friendly amendment. I haven't even considered the secular yet. But perhaps with the recommendation as is, that we could also look to refer this back to staff to provide options to council to help consider funding options for Stevenson's expansion efforts. I don't know if there'd be a second or to be considered that friendly amendment.
And so I see a secondaire by councillor Waters. So questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, I will tell you that we, we have been fortunate enough in here to, to have a community, Innisville Community Foundation, and I don't know if you're aware of them. And, and they've been doing some great, some great work with our, within our community as well. So there might be an option there, but we'll, that's run by a separate board, arms-length from council. But I'm sure staff can put you in touch with them if you have not already been in touch with our foundation board.
Thank you very much, councillor Nick. I'm glad I've not seen you here. I'm kind of glad we don't see people. It means you're doing well. So good on you. Take care of your health. I just want to make sure, once again, on behalf of the 120 docs we got here, our 300-plus staff, my talented board of directors, my talented C-suite, thank you guys for listening to me. And thank you for supporting your local community hospital on behalf of Innisville residents. We will be here for you when you need us, you need us most.
Thank you. So with that, I will, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a vote on the recommendation as amended and as shown on the screen. All in favor? Is there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Levesque, Dr. Levesque. And we'll pause just for a moment if we can before we go forward, council, because I understand we've lost our livestream. So we'll just take a five-minute break and thank you again, Jody, for being here. And you're, you're free to go if you like.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dolan. I'm delighted to be here if you have, and thanks for letting me come. Have a great evening, guys. Have a great council meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so council, if we could just take, it looks like we're still down. So we will just take a five-minute break if that, so it is now 7:28. If we can come back at 7:35, we'll take seven minutes and see if staff can't get the livestream up. Of course, if they can't, we will still record the, and play it afterwards so people can still watch it. But it just could be after the fact. But we'll, we'll give them a few moments to work on it. Thank you.
My apologies for my late appearance, Madam Chair.
That's, that's fine councillor. You didn't miss anything exciting.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, it was about 50 some odd years ago. I was in the Stevenson Memorial Hospital. So it really has changed.
Hello, Mayor. We do appear to have a complete worldwide outage of YouTube. So the stream doesn't work and neither do any videos on YouTube or any uploads. So I think the best that we can hope for at the moment is we'll just continue on with our recording. And then upload it after the fact when YouTube comes back.
I'd just like to interject, is that there have been a lot of complaints to the Ombudsman's Office as to whether or not that is an open meeting or whether we become inadvertently having a closed meeting. As to whether or not we wish to reschedule the remaining items to the next meeting.
Um, so I would suggest if we had, if we had somebody that had indicated that they wish to be involved either through open forum. But since we've had none of that, then even if, even if it was live, they couldn't participate anyway. So watching it either during or after, that's just my take, but I'm not a clerk. Councillor Nico.
Hey Worship, I did get a text from a neighbor that was actually watching when you, you paused the meeting, they were still watching, I was still watching online. And actually right now, I'm still watching the YouTube feed from the town, on town website. So it's, we are still recording right now as far as I can see on my other computer.
Oh.
Because I'm confused as what's, what may be going on.
Councillor C A O Rayner.
Your worship, members of council, there is, there is multiple pings that are indicating that it is broadcasting and then there are others who can't seem to get it. So as Dave said, it's a YouTube problem. It's on the back end. Your worship, members of council, it may be possible to share the Zoom link for those that are very keen on tuning in and being able to listen to this specific meeting. I think this might be a good one to test it frankly, because it's not an enormous agenda. It would give us a chance to see if, if this is a possibility moving forward. There's always the concern that someone jumps in, you know, and turns their video on and disrupts the meeting, but I think given the context of tonight's meeting, this might be a nice test and it may be a reasonable alternative, although we haven't discussed it internally with staff yet. But if you're interested, we can pursue that option.
Can I ask, is there somebody, is there a host of the meeting who has control that if, if that does happen, if somebody is acting inappropriately, that they're, they can be muted?
Yes, certainly. There's multiple hosts in play for any council meeting on the clerk side that can admit people through the waiting room, control video and, and mute, but it, they'll have to be quick on the mouse potentially.
What say you, council? Councillor Nico.
They were just of note as well to, during the height of the meeting so far today, we were up to 15 viewers. I know myself and probably two or three other in my street were included in that. We are still at 13 viewers that are online right now, so we haven't necessarily lost a ton of people that are watching right now, so. Just for the record.
I say we keep going.
If we're going to, the point, yeah, so I, I would agree. I would think if it was a more contentious issue or even if there was people. But the point is, even if somebody was watching this now and there was no way they can contribute if they didn't log in or, so I, I, I see where the deputy clerk is going, but if it was a public meeting, absolutely for sure. Or even if there was somebody who had spoken or opened forum, but then they would also be in the Zoom link, so. Um, I'd suggest we give that a try and, and we, we ask people if they're interested, they can come and join the Zoom link and turn off their video and their speaker. Do we need to give you a few more minutes to do that, Mr. Rayner, or should we keep going or?
I think given the context of worship, we're happy to, to keep moving. We'll push now the Zoom link out through our, our social media channels and post it where we can so that if people are paying attention, they can jump onto that. And we'll just apologize in advance that you may have the odd kind of video as somebody zooms in and doesn't turn the video off right away. But we know that won't distract you.
We've, we've had, we've had that before in different committees, so. And I do know, I, I do know what the deputy clerk is saying. I know at, at Simcoe County, the same thing happened, that we were having a meeting and we lost the Zoom link and we kept going. And, and, but the difference there was they weren't record, they could, they weren't recording it, so they couldn't play it afterwards. Whereas the difference here is even if someone can watch it real time, they can still afterwards watch the recording of the meeting, so. So we'll, we'll move ahead and, and start with item six if we have quorum back and we do. So, item six is the A G M for in services. And the first item 6.1 is the appointment of a chair for in services shareholders annual general meeting. And Deputy Mayor, do you still have time to, to chair that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. So could we have a mover and a secondaire to appoint a chair for the in services? That would be councillor Waters and councillor Fowler. All those in favor? That is carried and I shall turn the chair over to the Deputy Mayor.
Hey, we've got 6.2 up. I'd like to introduce Dr. George Shapiro, who is going to present us with a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, your worship. Deputy Mayor, council staff, thank you for joining us at the annual general meeting for in services, our water and wastewater department. Next, please. So as you see by the organizational chart, in power enterprises and in services, all three are being held, the shares are being held by the corporation of the town of Innisville. Next, please. So, in services is a municipal services corporation. So as is the case for in power, debt financing is off the town's books, so the town's borrowing capacity is not impaired by in services activities. For an example, the value of the wastewater plant expansion exceeds the town's borrowing limits, so these issues are mitigated with this type of arrangement. And so timing of developer advances would not dictate the scheduling of capital projects necessary for us to keep up with pending growth. And next, please. So we have bottle number one, which the shareholder has dictated over, overrules the, or rules the, the, the corporation on behalf of the shareholder. We have a small amendment, which is to remove the covenant that says that a person who was a councillor, other elected official of the shareholder that has been a municipality, that's removed so that we can have elected officials and councillors on the board as, as necessary. And next, please. So the board of directors. The C A O Rayner is, is on the board, that's official, Mayor Dolan. Bill Van Berkel, councillor Bill Van Berkel, by virtue of his experience is, the board is requesting a two-year appointment to coincide with this council term. Myself, the board asked me to stay on the board due to my past history. Another private sector representative, Stuart Reese, is being nominated by the board for one-year term. I'd like to thank Mark Aiken, who seek in board retirement. He's been an excellent addition to our board. And I'd like to thank him for his years of service on behalf of him services. And next, please. So the executive team is myself, Mike Melanision, the CFO, Tom Panic is now the chief operating officer. Tracy Morton, manager of safety compliance, Kathleen Pharaoh is the new utility superintendent for the waterside. Beaman Padell is the utility superintendent on the wastewater side. And we forgot to mention Nancy O'Halloran, which is our administration guru for the team. Next slide, please. So we have substantial projected customer growth on the horizon from less than 10, or less than 11,000 customers presently to almost 20,000 customers by 2034. What this is dictating to us that we have lots of capital work in order to accomplish, to service our future customers. Next, please. So as far as water quality goes, our compliance division was instrumental with regard to the drink and water quality management standard. We have achieved 100% on the D W Q M S reaccreditation audit and we had zero non-conformances noted, so I'd like to thank the team for this excellent result. Now, next, please. So in services supplies water to the town of Bradford, West Gullenberry. And this, this just shows the importance for us with our neighbor to the south. B W G has supplied from two wells and 65% of their water comes from in services. Next, please. So with regard to audited financial statements, I'd like to ask the CFO, Mike Melanision, for some comments, please.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, through you, your worship to council. I wasn't a part of 2019 that joined the organization in 2020, but I would do, like to do some highlights of the financial statements. It is the opinion of our auditors K P M G that the financial statements do represent fairly in all material aspects, the, the happenings and going on of the organization in services. Just a couple of highlights, from a revenue point of view, we are, our total revenues are up by about 6% year over year compared to last year. However, expenses are also up about 15%, primarily driven by an increase in depreciation, which is resulting from the large, as Dr. Shepherd suggested, large capital expenditures that we're incurring to manage the growth that the town is experiencing. As well, there's also increased maintenance costs. Overall, we have achieved a comprehensive net income, operating surplus of about $4.8 million and that is about, that is still down 16% year over year, but still a fairly substantial number, which will be directly applied to future capital works and capital projects. Towns, the town is sole shareholder of in services and its equity stake has grown 3% year over year. And just for a positive note on the balance sheet, the cash flow is fairly substantial at this point in time as we rev up and prepare for capital growth projects. It's, there's a 23% increase year over year in our cash position, which will be quickly depleted as we start moving forward with some projects that have been approved starting this year, wastewater plant expansion, pump stations. These are larger initiatives that will drain the cash flow, so we are, we are moving towards a budget for 2020, 2021. We are preparing that as we speak. And we'll be coming to council or the shareholder with a recommendation for a budget and water rate approvals within the next, within the next month to get that confirmation, so. If there's any questions, I can take them now or we can take them at the end of the presentation.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Next slide, please. So this is the last slide. And the board requests that the board approved minutes from last year be approved that the presentation be received, that receive the 2019 audited financial statements. Reappoint K P M G as auditor, appoint the directors and amend by law number one. So if any further questions, Mr. Chair will be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I don't see any. Is anybody else, sorry, councillor Waters?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to ask a question in terms of the operating surplus. Where that money sits on a year-to-year basis and do they have access to our investing fundraising, not fundraising, but in the investor group that we use or does that money is used too quickly to be a part of that?
Dr. Shapiro? Mike, sorry.
Through you, Chair. The, the position that the, the recent improved investor regime that we've enrolled in for the town, we are not eligible to participate that. I did, I did investigate that one. We are looking at different options of working around. The town, the town does collect a lot of the development charges and we do have the opportunity of investing. So yes, we have some opportunity to get better returns on that than the, the typical investments that we're currently restricted to. We are exploring that option. Definitely an opportunity for the future to get higher rates of return.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? Just move my screen here. Councillor Nichols, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation tonight. I know that it was a week, maybe possibly two weeks ago that we received this a meeting in special counsel with regards to the update on in services as well as in power, not, I'm curious. I don't remember anything about directors in that, that meeting there, and I have no concerns whatsoever with the qualifications of councillor Van Berkel. I'm curious about whether there was a call for applicants for the other directors. Mr. Stuart Reese's qualifications. If there were any others that were considered, I just, like, we didn't see that two weeks ago at all. I didn't see any indication that was concerned with directors or that Mr. Aiken was looking to, to step down as well, so just wanted to clarify how this came about in the last two weeks, if you could.
Okay, take that. Dr. Shapiro?
Thank you through, through you, Mr. Chair. The process of looking for new directors occurred right after New Year. When, when Wally Malcolm was at the helm. when when Wally Malcolm was at the helm. So a recruitment for directors went through the town. And I'd like to thank the clerks department for spearheading this. So a townwide search for directors was undertaken in the winter, early spring of this year. The appointment of directors was put on hold due to due to COVID and subsequent delays. The recommendation for the the recommended director was directly from one of the applicants that was received by the clerk's office and presented to the board and subsequently approved and now presented to the shareholder for approval.
Any other questions? That's Nichols.
Hey, just as a follow up, just for clarification, I'm curious why this wouldn't have been shared during the special meeting last just two weeks ago, I believe it was October twenty eighth. I just curious why we wouldn't be privy to this information with regards to the the board of directors. Again, I have no concerns. I I I fully fully endorse Counselor Van Burckel. His expertise would would be of great value to this, but it didn't come to the rest of council. I don't know that any of us were consulted otherwise. And that's my my bigger concern is that we had the meeting just two weeks ago. And this is the first I've heard of any of this.
Uh, will I turn this Dr. Shapiro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through yourself. The question was the twenty eighth, is this referring to the in power AGM? So at the in power AGM, we did have one director who was also a candidate at this recruitment process through the clerk's office. The same the same recruitment process produced a director for in power. And we also have one for for in services. We are looking through the candidates for also possible directors for enterprises. And as far as subsequent, as far as providing counsel with an opportunity to vet these applicants. We will, as corporations, be mindful of that request in the future so that these surprises will not occur again.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions to council, please? I don't see any. Okay, council, we have a recommendation before us.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Rayner was indicating and Counselor Waters was indicating.
Oh, I didn't see it. Sorry. Thank you. Counselor Waters.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to ask a question about the current CEO. Is this the current CEO acting or is this permanent?
Who will take that lead? I guess I'll ask Jason Rayner.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Happy to happy to address that as Chair of the in services board. We are currently recruiting for president and CEO of in power and in services. Given the resignation of Mr. Wally Malcolm earlier this fall. Thankfully, Dr. Chaparral, who is a longstanding board member, and of course, the former president of in power, came to answer the call for our interim president and CEO. So so Mr. Chaparral is in play while that recruitment is underway. And we are pleased to report that we received over two hundred applications for that senior level position. So we're we are making our way through those applications and scheduling interviews. In fact, they begin next week. So we're very excited to move that process forward and very thankful to Mr. Shepherd or Dr. Shepherd for his leadership during this tenure.
Yeah, I thought. Thanks for clarifying that because I must have misheard. I thought when he had mentioned the CEO position, I thought he was directing his attention towards, I think, is the the manager who is the is this in services right now. So I may have just misheard. So that's why I was asking for clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mayor Dolan?
Thank you. I just want to fill in the blanks a little bit if I could to as as a member of the board. So I maybe it was me, but I'd heard concerns before from members of council that they felt that there was a gap of information between members of council and as the shareholder and members of the board. So it was actually one of the things that I brought forward at the board to advocate for removing that section in by law one that only allowed the mayor and didn't allow another member of council to be on the board. Understanding that I, from my understanding, and the board agreed with me that having another liaison between council and the in services board would help with that flow of information.
Thank you. Does that answer council's concerns? Just trying to look at everybody here. Counselor Waters. Okay. C O.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just a few other comments if I could, as 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 chairman of the board. The first is to invite, if I could, Mr. Chairman, Kathleen and Beeman to turn on their videos and have their public debut, if I can call it that, as awkward as it is in a virtual setting. If we were in chambers, we would ask them to stand up. So I hope this is okay. I just want to thank them very much for joining the team and both as our superintendents of water and wastewater respectively. I know that they've been rolling up their sleeves and digging very deeply into into the work that we have and are making a number of recommendations about improvements in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. And we're very, very thankful that they've joined us. I don't see Beeman's video yet, but Kathleen, thanks very much for turning it on. Looks like you're still at the plant. So working hard. Thank you for doing that. We appreciate it. And and while I have the floor, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would also like to extend our appreciation. Others be even great. Thank you, Beeman.